No, they they go ahead and and start recording.
All right, so it is seven thirty. Good evening, everyone. This is the Needham Board of Zoning Appeals. We're on Zoom again, and we've been doing pretty well. As is my habit, I like to announce at the beginning if we lose the Internet and can't get back, all matters are continued until the February hearing on February twenty fifth. But so far, so good. We've had a year of doing this without a hitch. Thanks in part to our expert Clay that's honored to help us in that thing. We we are going to have only one matter tonight. I don't think anyone is on here for Edward Del Abroad. But there the paper messed up the public notice, so that is can't be heard tonight, and it will be continued until February twenty fifth. So the first order of business is to deal with the minutes from our last meeting. Unless there's some amendment, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So case number one, our only case, four sixty Central Avenue. Public notice is hereby given that Needham Enterprises LLC has made application to the Board of Appeals for a variance amendment under sections three point two point one, seven point five point three, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the planned substitution and or further relief pursuant to a ZBA variance four sixty Central Avenue, July nine nineteen sixty-three, authoring authorizing use of the premises for two-family purposes and any and all other relief necessary to permit demolition of the existing two-family dwelling and to replace it with a new two-family dwelling. The property is located at four sixty Central Avenue in the single residence B district. On the matter, I presume it's Mr. Jenta.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as indicated, this is an application concerning the property at four sixty Central Avenue. It's located just up the hill heading towards Newton from Honeywell Street. It's it's on shown on the town of Needham assessor's map. Number ninety-six as parcel number twenty. The lot contains eleven thousand four hundred ninety-eight square feet. So it's got almost fifteen hundred square feet more than required, and it has eighty feet of frontage, so the lot complies. The lot is currently occupied by an existing two-family house as well as a detached garage. The house consists of about two thousand two hundred and eighty finished floor area on the first and second floor with an additional nine hundred and sixty square feet in the basement. It's got nine rooms, including four bedrooms and two full baths. Now, the house was originally built quite a while ago and an addition put on in the fifties. But by a decision from the Board of Appeals dated July ninth nineteen sixty-three, there was a variance granted to permit the use of the house as a two-family, basically permit the use of the property as a two-family. That variance was issued to Sylvia R. Hall, who was the owner of the property at the time. Shortly thereafter, in November of nineteen sixty-three, there was a building permit issued, number five three three five, which has been provided to you along with some other materials. And that was to install a door and a fire escape, which basically allowed for the second unit to have adequate egress. Since since then, since nineteen sixty-three, there really have been very limited renovations done. There was a little bit of bathroom work done in the seventies, but other than that, the house really hasn't been updated or changed much since. So as you can imagine, an old house not really having had a lot of work done in the last, you know, sixty years is now ripe for either a lot of work or demolition reconstruction. And in fact, that is what is being proposed, is to have this existing two-family house knocked down and a new two-family house to replace it. Now, the proposed replacement two-family house complies with all applicable dimensional and density regulations. And in that vein, I'd like to point out that technically, because the use of the property for two-family purposes was authorized by variance, this is not a non-conforming situation. As a result, as a technicality, the provisions at section one point four point seven point four of the bylaw relative to reconstruction of non-conforming two-families doesn't apply. Nevertheless, the proposed replacement two-family does actually comply with all the dimensional and density requirements that are set forth in that section. So, for example, the most notable part of that section is there is an eighteen percent lot coverage limitation as applicable to this property. And in this case, the lot coverage under that section is seventeen point nine percent, so within the eighteen percent limitation. Now, while I'm talking about dimensional density, I also want to point out that under the bylaw construction, new construction on any single-family lot, whether it be for a two-family or a single-family, is limited to a twenty-five percent lot coverage, obviously a larger lot coverage. And the calculation is done a little bit differently for the purposes of that's of the section of the bylaw that imposes that requirement. And when you do the calculation under that section, we're at twenty-two point five percent lot coverage, so we're still sitting, you know, well under the the limitation. So basically, we have a a dimensionally and density conforming two-family to replace an existing two-family. And at this point, I want to mention the use, it having been authorized by a variance, attaches to the land and runs with the land, so no matter who the owner is, sort of no matter what happens, that is a now vested right that runs with the land and stays intact. So we're not proposing to change the use. We're just proposing to change the shell, as it were, the the physical house. And it is therefore a question of what the standard is. The board has dealt with this at least twice in the past. Once more recently, in two thousand sixteen for property at one fourteen Hillside Avenue. And then several years before that, in two thousand eight for property at seventy seventy-two Marshall. In both of those cases, the board essentially applied the same test that you apply for a non-conforming situation, which is whether it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood to have the new house versus the existing house. And in both of those cases, the board found, in fact, that the new house was not substantially more detrimental. We would assert in this instance that the proposed replacement house conforming in all respects with dimensional and density requirements is also not substantially more more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing house. In addition, the board also, in those prior cases, looked at whether or not the proposed new two-family was consistent with the variance that was granted. And again, in this case, we'd say, just like in the other cases, this one is consistent as the use variance didn't apply any conditions, restrictions, limitations, wasn't tied to any particular plan, size of house or anything like that. It was a blanket use variance to allow for two-family use. So we'd argue that we are within the four corners of that variance and therefore meet with the bylaw. Now, another side note, in this case, as in some other prior cases, is if this property were not redeveloped with a new two-family, a single-family could go in that would be substantially larger. So one of the quirks is because the two-family, because we are complying with the requirements of section one point four point seven point four, we are limited to a smaller footprint, a smaller house than a single-family could be on that same lot. So from that perspective, we think that this is it's an appropriate redevelopment. The house is appropriate, meets all the requirements, and therefore we would ask that the board approve it.
Yeah, I think I think the key question is whether we read this variance to be limited to a specific structure. And I've looked at it several times. It's hard to read because the print is so small when you get it by email, but the operative language says it authorizes the building inspector to issue a permit for alterations in construction so long as it's consistent with the requirements for a two-family house. So at least the way I read it, it not only isn't limited to what was there or a specific house, it really just authorized the the building inspector to do whatever he thought was appropriate. I don't I don't I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with me, but we'll find out. Let me just note that we do have a bunch of comments from the town departments, the building inspector is no problem. The health department points out that you need to do a demolition permit and comply with their requirements of pest control during demolition and construction. The fire chief has no problem. The planning board made no comment. The engineering department had no comment. So are there any questions from the board?
Yes, this is Howard. Good to have you spoken from to the neighbors or heard any feedback from the neighbors.
Um, I believe there's been some communication, but I don't think it's been extensive. To my knowledge, there's not been any issues raised, but but I can't conclusively definitively say.
Do we have anyone here from the public on this? I I think we have only the development team that's
Mister Mister Chairman, we have two members of the public who have raised hands who are interested in making comments.
Let's hear from them what they have to say.
All right, I'm going to promote to a panelist Maureen De Mayo. Maureen, please unmute.
She needs to unmute.
Hi.
Hi. We see you. We see you.
Yes. My name is Maureen De Mayo. This is my husband Jim. We are butters to the property. We live at four forty-two Central Ave. And we had some specific questions. I'm going to let my husband talk.
Yeah, first, first of all, the 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 plot plan that was in the information given to us definitely states that the coverage is twenty-two point five percent of of the the plot size. And I thought it was my understanding that that the limit was eighteen point something percent. How 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 is that reconciled?
Mister Mister Chairman, can you answer that?
Yes, please.
So the there are two different parts of the zoning bylaw that impose limits on lot coverage. One part of the bylaw imposes an eighteen percent coverage limit, and the other part of the bylaw imposes a twenty-five percent coverage limit. Both of the both parts of the bylaw have a they each have their own way that you calculate lot coverage. So the way you calculate it for one is different than the way you calculate it for the other. The twenty-two point five is the calculation for the twenty-five percent lot coverage part of the bylaw. There's another plot plan that maybe you haven't seen that shows the calculation under the other part of the bylaw is seventeen point nine percent. And there's a part of it, just to explain some of the differences between the way the calculate, how the calculation is different. In the first part, the part that's eighteen percent, you have to drop down from any overhangs, but you also don't include a detached garage that's located in the rear. The other part of the bylaw does not include or does include the garage located in the rear. So, you know, that's an additional five hundred and seventy-five square feet that counts for one part of the bylaw, but doesn't count for the other part. So that's why you see twenty-two point five. That's a specific calculation for one part, and the calculation for the other part is seventeen point nine percent.
Okay, my other question was just as to the side setbacks. The side setback is stated in the bylaws, I believe, at fifteen percent.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, sorry. And on the the diagram drawing, the side setback is fourteen and a half feet for the house and nine point nine feet, three inches or six feet for the garage. How is that compliant?
Mister Jenta?
So the let's deal with the garage first. The bylaw has a separate setback requirement for the garage, which is only five feet from the property line. And that's basically for detached structures, accessory structures like garages, sheds, and so on. They only need to be set back five feet from the property line unless they're over fifteen feet in height, in which case then they have to be set back further. But in this case, the garage is under fifteen feet in height, so it only needs to be set back five feet from the property line. As to the sideline setback, that should be that is fourteen feet, I believe, but
fourteen.
And so therefore, we do comply comply with that because the closest setback is fourteen and a half feet.
Is it fourteen feet because it's a lot before nineteen eighty-six?
Hold on.
It's fifteen feet for new construction, but I think there's a special rule.
Well, isn't this new construction?
I think it's fourteen.
It's fourteen feet, and then there's a this is Mark Glusing speaking. It's it's a fourteen-foot setback for thirty-two feet of linear wall. Then you have to offset an additional two feet, which is which this structure does.
Are no fifteen-foot setbacks.
And and I from my point of view, I take it when the building inspector says he has no comment, he would be the primary one to look at this, and he certified to us that it meets the dimensional requirements. So I'm sorry, do you have other questions?
One one more.
One more question is is could you explain why this is a continuance of a variance and not a special permit?
I'll try and answer that too. So so there are two general different types of zoning relief that can be granted. One is a variance, one is a special permit. Variances are fundamentally different than special permits in that once variances are granted, they run with the land forever and ever. In this case, back in back in sixty-three, a variance was granted to authorize the use of the property for two-family purposes. In a lot of cases in town, you have houses that were built, you know, usually before nineteen twenty-five, that have been used as a two-family since nineteen twenty-five, and no variance was ever granted, but they've been used as a two-family since before there was zoning. So those are considered grandfathered, and when people want to knock those down, it's a special permit. So as you can tell by the fact that we have to come before the board from a sort of real-world functional perspective, it doesn't make much difference. We have to come before the board and do the same kind of review either way. But a special permit is only applies to grandfathered sort of uses that have been around long enough that they predate zoning. Whereas a variance for for a good chunk of time, you could get a use variance, even if the bylaw didn't allow it, even if your property wasn't two-family. So like in this instance, this property, although it was only a few properties away from a large portion of town that was zoned for two families up until nineteen fifty-eight, this was a single-family until nineteen sixty-three, when it got the variance. So so but if in sixty-three, if they hadn't gotten the variance in sixty-three, but they just converted it to a two-family, it would have been illegal, and we wouldn't be here today.
Any more questions?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and and do you have a a problem or are you in support of this? It's getting rid of an old house and building a nice new one.
The problem that we have is the garage is basically going to be in our backyard. That's the problem we have. I'm sure that the structure itself will be beautiful, even though it's enormous and takes up, you know, a long sort of Lego-looking from front to back. You know, townhouses. I'm sure they'll be beautiful. It's the garage that we have an issue with. It's literally, you could see the way our lot is. The neighbor next door to us bought ten thousand square feet before we even bought our house. And so her yard goes like stops here, and then our yard continues behind her yard. This garage will be basically along the back of our yard. So we just, you know, that that's the issue that we have.
It it doesn't look like they can move it much and and still build it. I mean, maybe they could bring it closer to the house, but then it's going to create a problem with the turnaround.
So I will tell you that my husband and I tore our own house down fifteen years ago and rebuilt on the same property. We had a very similar story. We had a very old house, didn't make sense for us to fix it. It was, you know, had a lot of problems. When we built our house, we built it in such a way that we were cognizant of the setbacks. We hoped to build a garage one day. And we were aware of, you know, where the garage would land in relation to our neighbors out our backyard. You know, so I think that's really most of the issue that my husband and I have is where the garage is. It's in our backyard, basically, five, six feet away, whatever it is.
Five feet?
Yeah. So.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else that want to be heard?
Yes, there's a Michael Gould, and I will go ahead and promote him as well.
Give muted.
Hello. We see you. We see you, and I think we can hear you.
Hi, some things changed when you did that. Yeah, mine is Michael Gould. We live at four sixty-eight Central Ave. On the other side of four sixteen is my wife Rena. You know, all of the bylaws and all that stuff is way over our head. My question and concern is, I'm not sure what the legal term is, but in the past, the two-family next door has been a rental property, and we've seen a continuing stream of various renters of varying degrees of well, just varying degrees of desirability. And I wonder if there's a difference in whether a property is being developed as a two-family house or as a pair of condominiums.
Well, we don't have the ability to say people can't rent their property, but let's ask the development team here. Often when people do this, they're intending to sell two units rather than continue as a rental property. I don't know if Mr. Jenta can say anything about that.
Um, so it's these are the plan is the intention is to do these as condos. They're not intended to be rentals, but of course, you know, down the road at any point, somebody, you know, even as condos, an owner could wind up renting them. But as far as the this development plan is to do them, to sell them as condo units. I would imagine.
Yeah, I was going to say for Gouldly's benefit, we've seen quite a number of these. And at least our experience is that when properties get old and rundown, yes, they tend to get rented to a bunch of college kids and maybe people that aren't the best neighbors. When they get redeveloped or being sold for a million dollars apiece, it tends to bring a different kind of person moving into the units.
And as far as the setbacks issue, as far as that side of our house has no windows, so doesn't really make a difference to us what goes there because we couldn't see it anyway. The buyers might be concerned if their windows overlook our property, but that's their concern, not ours. And that was the only question I had.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, George?
Yes.
Um, Paul? Mark, where is he? There he is. Is there any way of shifting the garage towards the other property in the back? Shifting it over? And how would that impact your layout?
Well.
It move it three feet, but doesn't make a lot of difference.
And actually, actually, I believe the De Mayo's, correct me if I'm wrong, are actually on the eight-foot-away side. They're already on the side that we shifted away from because of trying to be cognizant of that.
Okay, got it.
So there was some thought into that, but again, we were limited by it is rather narrow as the lot tapers back and to get a two-car garage, even with the limits that we are put on with section one point four point seven point four, I think it is. I believe that what we ran into is, you know, a certain taper that we could only slide it to the right so much.
Okay, thank you.
And anyone else on the board have a question?
I I do, if I could.
Sorry?
If I could, I have a question. I I mean, I have to say that that this is quite a variance, George. I mean, there's no findings or anything in it, which makes me personally not crazy about continuing it. But it 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 is what it is. Uh, I I I'm I have succumbed to pandemic fog in a major way. George, if a if a variance is exercised, can it lapse through non-use?
Once a variance is exercised and sort of perfected, you you I think it can't lapse through non-use. You need affirmative abandonment.
It's not like a non-conforming use in that respect.
Yeah, you you've got to have, yeah, you can't. It's not like a non-conforming use where you get the two-year provision.
Right.
You need to have an affirmative exercise of intent.
Okay, that that was what I thought, but it wasn't true. Okay, no, I I I have no other questions.
I I actually have another wildcard question for Mr. Jenta. Have you thought about the possibility of chapter forty-eight, section seven that was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, which basically says if a property is there for ten years, it's deemed to be non-conforming? Do you think that changes the general rule that something built pursuant to a variance is not a non-conforming property?
Well, I I always consider that section, seeing as I've used it now at least twice before the board. I would actually say would be I'd have to really think it through, but considering that this one was actually built under a permit, under both a building permit and variance, ostensibly, it's different than what was contemplated under that revision to the to the to the tolling statute. I still I still think the variance sort of trumps that because the fact that it's a grant of a of an absolute right for use.
I mean, I I mean, if a variance was tied to a particular building, then I'd have a problem doing this. But we've done it several times when we have these old variances that aren't really tied to a set of plans, and so I I think we can do it in that. I I I think it's kind of an anomaly that it's here pursuant to a variance rather than a real non-conformity, and my inclination is to pretty much treat them as the same, even though the procedure is a little different.
And I would actually point out, and this, John, I think goes a little bit to your comment, but also to Peter's comment. Fortunately or unfortunately, depending upon how you look at it, the the language in of this variance and the structure of this variance is almost identical to the one that the board reviewed in two thousand and eighteen for one fourteen Hillside Avenue. And I can tell you from looking at other properties in town that there's a few others of these floating around out there, and they were all the same thing. It was, you know, basically just, okay, limited minimal findings. Here's your here's your permission. Building inspector can can grant the permit.
It's 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 actually somewhat rare in Needham. This is common from all the variances I've seen in the fifties or sixties in Needham. It's it's pretty common in other cities and towns as well where the findings that we would do today in the two thousand and twenty-one variance are not stated there. I I don't have a problem. The variance is granted, allowing a two-family use. It didn't say anything about a structure, any particular structure, any
Any particular structure, any plans. I think it runs with the lands. I think it's perpetual. And subject to some other case or statute on abandonment or termination, I don't think it has been. Uh, I think the variance is fine. I think the plans are very attractive. It's a it's a tremendous improvement. I hear the butter's concern of where the garage is located and cited. And that that that's a concern that I I would have hoped people would have addressed, and it appears they they did. I still think it'll be an improvement over what's there today. And. And I think meeting the standards of the non-conforming, the the bylaw for a non-conforming property. I I'm comfortable with the project, and the building inspector has no objections or concerns.
And Howard?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm wondering whether we can, whether the the neighbors, the the males would appreciate some type of a screening on that side. Whether our vities or some other suggestion as a mitigating factor.
Well, Mister Goldman, I can tell you that the developer had some conversations with the the property behind and was already planning on putting some screening there. So I'm sure we could put some screening along the that back at corner. To, you know, along the where the property line is with the D'Amelios as well.
Would that be desirable to the D'Amelios? I would ask them.
Desirable to no garage?
With the garage, but with some screening.
With some vegetation, some unis or something that goes on.
Yes.
I guess so, yeah.
Yes.
And are you thinking something like the arborvitae, which grows tall?
Probably some arborvitae, something along that line. That would be an evergreen. I think those are usually, that's sort of the go-to standard for for screening because it it's there all year round. You don't have to worry about the leaves coming off in the winter. And and they they provide a nice thick, you know, almost like a natural living fence kind of a thing.
Do you don't have a problem including that in a decision if we were to vote to approve this?
Uh, right.
Your answer is. Mister Chair, there's a hand raised by the Goldies.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I have a question, and that's, uh, so we're at four sixty-eight. We're on the other side. How close will the. Property be to our. Our boundary?
I guess I don't I don't quite understand your question. This garage has to be under fifteen feet tall, and I guess I thought you said you have no windows. So that really wasn't an issue.
Well, it it sounds like the garage is not going to be next to our house. It's going to be next to our backyard, apparently.
Right.
I I could share my screen if if it would be helpful, and I can show them the plan if they don't have it in front of them. Just, I mean, it sounds like you haven't seen it.
Yeah.
If Daphne.
It's it's in the rearmost part of the lot.
So the yes, the while I'll explain it to you while I'm looking at you first, and then I'll bring up the screen. In the rear is the garage. The garage space will be six feet off the property line, one foot more than is the required minimum. Partly because we like to give a little bit of play for anything that can happen between, you know. You know, actually building it and drawing it on paper. Secondly, along the property line where your home is. Your butters, your adjacent home will be fifteen point eight feet off the property line. Allowing for the passage of vehicles to that garage. So let me try and share my screen. Bear with me on that, and.
So it sounds like the driveway will be in the location of the existing driveway?
Very much so. So we're trying, ultimately, our goal was to try and. Uh, low impact as much as we could to try and minimize the general disturbance of the. You know, area, neighborhood ambiance that people. Have grown to like. And let's see. I'm just trying to see how I go about sharing this, Daphne.
Yeah, you have, as a panelist, you have the ability to screen, share screen.
Okay, I got it.
At the bottom edge, yes.
How's that? So if we look here, I think you can see my little hand on my mouse. That's where the garage is. And that is six feet off in parallel to that lot line. As you can see, the lot line makes a couple of little turns as it goes back. Through this portion at the narrowest spot, it's fifteen point eight, which is fifteen feet, ten inches. To translate into normal feet and inch parlance. The driveway will come up as it does now. It will probably be a couple of feet wider and a little bit smoother than it currently appears. And as it passes the house, there will open up to a slight turnaround. So we don't have to be backing down that driveway at the end of the day. To the two-car garage that'll be under fifteen feet tall. I hope that clear clarifies it. Sometimes it's really difficult coming to these meetings without the plan in front of you.
Yeah, that's helpful. And so it's going to be way in the back. Way in the back rather than next to my house. Yeah, okay, that's very, that's very helpful.
And the area that explains stuff with regard to the dimensional requirements that they were talking about earlier is down here. And that breaks down that lot coverage so that you can feel comfortable about that. All right.
Thank you. So I I think technically. All we're doing is here is making a finding that the proposed new house is consistent with the variance. I don't think we're amending anything. I I think that's technically what we would be doing. We approve this. So that makes sense, George?
That's that, yes, Mister Chairman, that's what you've done in the past. It's been really a finding that the plan substitution is within. The spirit of the original areas.
All right, is there anything more? Are we ready for a motion? Mister Tampkin, would you do the motion? You're you're muted?
I cannot find my notice, so maybe if Howard has it in front of him. My published notice.
Well, then the the notice is confusing because it talks about taking action under certain sections.
Still want to have it in front of me.
Yeah, the fair enough, but but it what we're really doing is authorizing. We're we're finding that this. New two-family is consistent with the variance. I mean, I don't I don't even see how you I don't think you can call it a planned substitution because there was no plan. And the variance that we've substituted.
I think it's a substitution of a property as proposed in the plans filed with the application and a finding that it's in conformity with the July ninth nineteen sixty-three variance. To allow a two-family home on the property. That's my motion.
And and I think subject to there being.
Screening.
Some vegetative screening on the. The D'Amelio side of the property. Of of for the garage.
Let me ask one question before I accept that, George or anyone, Paul, was there going to be screening of both sides of the property? You're muted, George.
Sorry about that. The back and the portion that's next to the D'Amelios is where the screening was contemplated. Not to say there might not be some other put in as, you know, when they get out there and then they do the construction.
So there'd be appropriate evergreen-type screening along those property lines in the rear end to the D'Amelios property. Uh, so that's my motion is inarticulate as it may have been.
I second that that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mister Goldman, yes?
Yes, aye, am I am you? Yeah.
All right.
A second back.
All right, good luck with your project, and I I I hope you'll be sensitive to the neighbors in terms of. The hours of construction and where people park their vehicles that. Can turn out to be aggravating. That's unnecessary.
And I would also suggest that maybe you speak to the D'Amelios and go over the screening that you're going to put in there and. The height, the type, whatever. Be a good neighborly thing to do.
I think is there any more business for tonight? I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn, Mister Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.